All right, good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestream for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 892-0360-7138, and the required password is 646-046. All right, call to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Silva. Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Ms. Ting Jansen.
Here.
Mr. Coughlin.
Here.
Ms. Devin Iero.
Here.
Dr. Morton.
Here.
Out of no notice, a agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on August 28, 2024, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the township clerk. Ms. Devin Iero, would you lead us in this way to the floor?
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do not have a motion. We do not need to go to executive session at the beginning. So, let's go to Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. You're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. You're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you're referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public, Mr. Kizmarsky, and second by Mr. Hughes. We are officially open to the public.
I think there may be some people in the audience who want to speak on a particular topic, and if you'd like, you could speak on Resolution 19U and come forward. That would be the Agenda item. That would be appropriate. If you'd like, it's related to appointing of coaches. So, if you'd like to, come forward. Otherwise, or you can wait till the end, which is public questions, but that would be at the end of the meeting. Go on once, go on twice. Just refer to 19U, which is the resolution on the Agenda.
Derek Cunningham, 14 Merkstroh, Mawa. There's no conjunction with the appointment of the coach.
It's just step up a little bit. Just refer to 19U. Okay, perfect.
So, on 19U, there is no problem with the appointment of the coach, with prospective appointment of the coach. Really, what we're speaking to is the lack of allocation for a girls' program. Basically, we were told, and a proposal was submitted, and I'm sure that you guys don't already know about this, sorry, board members and whatever else, proposal was made to allocate an additional coach to support a girls' team. It never made it to committee, and therefore, I'm sure you don't know about it. There are six girls members on the Mawa Wrestling Team. They want to compete against, in duel meets, against others. And the resolution that came out was that, well, you can have an additional stipend of like, which is another on top of your other one of like, oh, well, you're going to go to a tournament on a Sunday for eight hours or nine hours and get an additional 70 bucks because you have a volunteer. A volunteer is not going to suffice. They do not, they're able to carry the liability of supervising for that, so it becomes an extra burden. These girls are looking to compete. It's exploded across the nation. Girls wrestling has gone full tilt. On the world stage, the men's division has fielded an Olympic gold medalist every year since 1963, except for this one. They got zero. The women have two, right? The reality is, you're asking them to compete in duel meets against boys is not satisfactory anymore because this is a newer sport for them. They have a chance to achieve scholarships, get to college as a result of it, because it's still new for them. They're training in the offseason, they're going to clubs, but the reality is, they have three to four years' worth of experience. You're asking them now to compete against boys who've been training year-round since they were five, at a fully-developed age. You only have six girls on your team compared to Ramsey, who has a dedicated coach, actually has two dedicated coaches for the girls' team, I double-checked that because I called their coach because we're old wrestling buddies, who have two dedicated coaches for this now, and they're competing against each other. It is a hindrance against them generating a scholarship because when recruiters come around, they look strictly at records. If you're five and 20, because 15 of those were boys in a duel meet, you've now stacked the deck against them. I'm trying to bring this to your attention because to me, it sounds like an inequitable solution. Come next year, right? Come next year, it's not an option anymore. The NJ...
SIAA.
SIAA, thank you, not correct building. Has deemed coming out down the pipe next year, they are no longer allowed to compete against boys in duel meets. So, you have to do this. It's not an option, right? The only thing that, by dragging this out that you're doing is, and I don't mean you, I'm just, by the only thing that's happened is doing, is you're hindering their record and potentially their chance at getting a girls' scholarship. I'm just trying to, you know, they're here to speak for themselves, right, eventually, but what we're talking about here really is giving them the opportunity to compete against their peers. Their boy counterparts, I mean, I know we like to say it's all equal, they are not their peers in this sport. I know it's not the same, like, I mean, girls softball's got three coaches, girls baseball has three coaches.
Softball has four.
Sorry, softball has four coaches, right? We're asking...
Mr. Cunningham, can I interrupt you for one second?
Go right ahead.
I'm just curious, you're referring to a proposal that was made by whom and to whom? I'm just curious because there's nothing that's come to the Board of Education about a proposal. So, is that something that you had submitted?
No. Actually, the head wrestling coach submitted a proposal back in March, gave all the data...
A written proposal?
Yes.
To whom?
The athletic director and the principal. Gave all this data, and it seemed like it kind of fell on deaf ears. Parents have voiced their things, and that's kind of why we're all here tonight, okay? As a result of this, like, I think you can understand, our kids come first in everything. This particular portion of the athletic program has been underserved for a long time. I know this because I coached in the rec program. And when I say that, I had fielded, by the time they were in eighth grade, nine kids who were ranked the top 120 in the country, 1-320 in the country. Their parents chose to take money out of their own pockets to send them to parochial school because this was not funded. They're not sending them to the tournaments that they need to go to to get better. They're not, it's just not happening, right? And these kids went on to have Division One careers at Rutgers, full ride. West Point, well, I mean, you get a full ride anyway, but like, they got in because of that, full ride. Duke, Harvard, right? And the list goes on. At a certain point, there needs to be a balance here. There needs to be an equitable balance between the rest of them. That I can probably say, if we looked at the books, there's not an equal amount going to every program, right? Like, and you have a feeder program coming into this. We have 98 kids in our wrestling program. We are already supporting girls. And if it's, to be honest with you, for this amount, I've already spoken to our administration, if it's a matter of dollars, right, like, you can't, if we can't get a specialty coach, we're already willing to fundraise for this, and we'll pay in cash if need be. But one way or another, it needs to happen. Next year is not an option. This has to be done anyway, right? We're just trying to give our daughters the same chance that every other school is doing, Ramsey, Indian Hills, Ridgewood, Lakeland, I think this one?
Fair Lawn.
Fair Lawn, right? They're already doing this. They're already funding, fully funding a girls' team. I don't care if they practice together, but getting their own women's cut singlets, getting their two coaches designated to them to go to tournaments, because I'll be honest with you, I don't know if any of you ever coached or wrestled or anything else like that, but I've had to run back and forth between mats and have to sit in the right corner so I could coach two people at the same time. At the high school level, that just shouldn't be, period, right? At the end of the day, you know, we're just looking for a balance here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead, come forward. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. This intimidates me a lot. Julian Novello, 19 Dalwood Court. Just to piggyback on what Mr. Cunningham was saying, my girls started wrestling after my son started. Carlos has been wrestling since he's in kindergarten. And Eva came to us when she was in the fourth or fifth grade and asked if she could wrestle, and my husband told her no. We finally let her do it, and then COVID happened. So, she lost a year. And then she came back, and I watched her get her butt kicked all over the mat. And it's hard as a mom to explain to your daughter why it's happening, because we all know that through puberty, things change, right, for girls and for boys. And there was a clear imbalance when it came to the physicality of the sport. But she loved it. And trust me, I'm a softball player, I wanted nothing more for my girls to play softball. I am very realistic, and their place is on the mat. And I say it all the time, nobody's going to learn a better lesson than when they're wrestling on the mat, because you can only win on your own. It's a team sport, but it's an individual sport. And we all are volunteers. I mean, Derek and I have been mat-side with our kids, and we were talking about it today. There's been times where Juliette and Ava were wrestling at the same time, and my husband wasn't there, and I'm trying to run from mat to mat. It's kind of a slap in the face to ask somebody to volunteer their time at a tournament. Last year, we took the girls to a tournament in Elizabeth. I pushed Wagner, I pushed him. I'm like, listen, I teach, I teach in Ridgefield Park, I'm very friendly with the wrestling coach there. He was giving me all the information about the girls' tournaments. I wanted to give my kids that opportunity. This was something new in Mawa, and it was exciting, and she loved it, and they supported her. And I came to Wagner, and he was like, yeah, let's get it done. And we took the kids down there, my husband and I, we picked everybody up at 5:30 in the morning. I didn't get home until 7:30 at night. My gas, my time, my kid, my team. That's what it comes down to. I get it, we have a paid coaching staff. These girls deserve to have their own coaching staff, not a volunteer. You're asking somebody to quit a lot of time, and I don't, like, I'm not trying to be aggressive, I'm very passionate, you can probably see it in my neck, but they deserve to have what's due to them, right? They're going out there wrestling boys, they're still wrestling boys. I mean, I have a whole thing prepared for later on, but, I mean, this is just a glimpse at it. They deserve to have two coaches. At the Elizabeth tournament, my husband and I were there, Mr. Cunningham, and I believe Avery Stav, Bob Seeger, he came, we were helping because Coach AP was in one room coaching one of the wrestlers on a mat, and then maybe Lindsay got pulled to wrestle on a mat. Is it fair to have a wrestler without a coach in their corner? Thank God, we coach rec. I coach, yes, I do. I'm crazy. I mean, if you ever come to a match, I'm screaming for everybody. They make fun of me when they go over their film. But I love it. I love it for everybody. I love it for the boys, I love it for the girls. This program is turning around, not just for the boys, for the girls. And it would be an incredible injustice if Mawa does not give the girls the coaching staff that they deserve. It's coming, you guys have no choice. So, why can't we, why can't we pioneer the movement? Why do we have to wait for everybody else to put it in place and just follow somebody's lead? We're supposed to be the leaders. We're supposed to be the ones making people follow us, right? Why should we let our competition get the advantage? The advantage is here. And we have more girls who have come to offseason practices because of them, because of what Mawa High School has put on social media. I mean, if anybody follows the Instagram, the X, the Facebook, their faces are the ones that are on there. And I don't want, you know, disparage the boys, but they're the faces, okay? Four girls on the team last year outperforming the entire boys' team. They took fourth in county for a team. Four girls. So, thank you very much.
I like having reports on my phone, I hope that's okay. So, I might get a little emotional about this, but I like to share with you how much wrestling means to me.
Sorry, honey, I just, we just need your name if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sorry. I like to just hear you saying how much wrestling means to me. Wrestling has helped me throughout the worst moments of my life. Sorry. I've never been so passionate about something in my life until I started wrestling. I go to club at least two nights a week, and the only reason I'm not there right now is because I have to be here. The only, the only reason I have a confidence to even come up here today, even though I am crying, is because of wrestling. Before wrestling, I could barely speak out loud in class. I was so nervous. As a young woman, I feel that I can actually protect myself in bad situations because of wrestling. I do not want that to be taken away from me, not today, not ever. With the new state law, as everyone has said before, 2025, girls will not be allowed to wrestle boys. So, if we don't have a team, we can't wrestle, like, at all with our school. The only way for us to continue doing what we love, continue to place and win at tournaments, and continue to work hard, and one day make it to state, because I know we will, we need a girls' wrestling team. We have the numbers, and we can get more. People have already come and told me, if you have a team, I would try out, I would want to do that. And we have, and girls of all ages enjoy wrestling, I see them, and more will as awareness and a team is made. And even if you still aren't completely sure, don't just do this for the girls that are here today, do this for the younger girls who are already in the rec program, who also have a shot at becoming great wrestlers and state champions. My sister took second in the States this year, and another girl, she took first in that same bracket. I see them wrestle, and they are amazing. Girls like my sister who want to keep wrestling, we all want to keep wrestling, and I do not want that to be taken away from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Sorry, okay, so, I joined wrestling last year, and nothing could prepare me for how intense and difficult this sport is, but also how much I would grow to love it. Going into my junior year now, I can't even begin to imagine myself not wrestling. The sport has helped me physically embed my health, but also made me a harder worker in school and more responsible. I know that if we are able to extend the sport to more young women in Mawa, we'd see more successful students and a greater roster for the next season. There's no reason in my mind that we shouldn't have a girls' team. It would encourage girls to try something new, and maybe even something that will end up becoming a major part of their life. I still don't know what I want to be once I'm out of high school, nor in college that I'm planning on going to yet, but I know that my goal is to eventually wrestle in college, and that is a goal that I am now working towards. Again, I just joined last year, I already placed fourth in counties. It's a fast-growing team, there's, we're at the point, there are now more girls in practice than guys during offseason practice. Wrestling has given me a better outlook on life, a confidence booster, a grounding, something to look forward to, and connections with my teammates that otherwise I would never build if it wasn't for the sport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Morano, I'm representing the Chrissy family. Alex Chrissy is, I believe, one of the leaders on the team, a captain, right, on the boys' team. He just wanted me to express his support for a girls' team as well, as well as the entire Chrissy family. Unfortunately, Mom couldn't make it today, she's taking care of elderly Mom and Dad, and Alex is down checking out a college today. So, he couldn't make it, but they wanted to express their full support for a girls' team. So, I'll leave it at that, keep it short, and I appreciate you guys taking the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. DeToro, do you want to?
I told them to wait to the end, because it's supposed to directly relate to the Agenda, correct? When we speak now?
If it's about the wrestling program...
I think it's okay, you can continue if you'd like. I mean, they're well-prepared.
I'm Ava Novello, I live at 19 Dalwood Court, and I'm captain of the wrestling team for the boys as well as for the girls. I'm going to be an upcoming junior at Mawa High School, and I have been wrestling since sixth grade. Initially, in the fifth grade, I had asked my father to let me wrestle, but he had told me that no daughter might wrestle. But now, six years later, my father constantly tells people, please, you let me and my sister wrestle sooner. In middle school, I was constantly teased for wrestling. I was told it was a boys' sport, and that it didn't, but it didn't matter to me, though, because the second I stepped into the wrestling, I fell in love with the sport. Not only did it give me and my dad something to bond over, but it gave me the self-confidence I had been seeking. Wrestling is one of the reasons I'm able to stand in front of the board today. What I learned on the mat can't be taught anywhere else. It teaches you perseverance and gives you the mindset to do things you thought you couldn't do. Up until high school, I only wrestled boys. As I got older and wrestling boys, they would constantly grab me, and even a few times, I would get thrown and get hurt, and I'd have to continue wrestling because this was the sport I decided up for. My mother would watch me cry on the mat in pain and have no choice but to sit and wait for my matches to finish. I was constantly losing, and I thought I couldn't do it. I convinced myself there was no way I could win a match. However, my freshman year stepping into Coach Wagner's room for the interest meeting, he seemed hopeful for my upcoming season and wrestling career ahead of me. I, however, was not as optimistic. After years of being beat down by boys over and over, I felt as if I was a waste of attention in the wrestling room. After a year at the high school, I realized how much easier it was to win a match when you and your opponent were equally matched by size, gender, and weight. My team started placing in tournaments an hour and a half away that my parents would have to take their time out of their day to drive to. After the Elizabeth tournament this past year, it was clear to the coaches how far me and the other girls could go in the sport. Watching my teammates and even my own sister succeed after being beat down over and over again, it felt like a weight lifted off my shoulders. But it's not enough to guess where we need to be. The girls on the Mawa Wrestling Team are the hardest workers out there because for us to win, we need to work 10 times harder. There were no opportunities for girls to wrestle girls when I was younger, but as I reached the high school level, I see now other towns have created girls' wrestling teams, and even some colleges are starting up women's programs. If Mawa had a girls' team with a standard coaching staff, it would provide me and my fellow teammates an equal opportunity to succeed without the risk of it occurring. Sadly, the reality is that when you are wrestling boys, your chances of getting hurt are higher because boys are just built differently and more muscular. Even if me and a boy weigh the same, my chances of getting injured are increased. Having a girls' team would allow us to travel to other towns and be able to face a greater variety of competition that we see at these tournaments. Coach Harper Zeez allowed Coach Wagner to take extra time out of their days to run girls' practices when we made arrangements and the boys unfortunately didn't. Coach Harper Zeez met the girls an hour and a half to coach us at a tournament while it was snowy due to the late entry into the tournament. Not only will a girls' team help Mawa, but it will also grow the score of women's wrestling around the world and maybe help inspire a program in other towns. I hope to give other girls the hope and support that they can be a winner by helping Mawa have a girls' wrestling team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Obviously, I'm going to say, I mean, all you women are speaking very passionately, so thank you very much, and I don't think you would find a board member up here who doesn't believe in the fact that you should have an opportunity and chances. I think the issue is the process, perhaps, and maybe Dr. Dettoro can elaborate on it a little bit. I don't think any of us on the board are familiar with the specifics because I can tell you, this is the first I'm hearing of it, and I think several of us as board members, and I think Dr. Dettoro and myself and Mr. Kizmarsky, who are on the executive committee, just spoke about it briefly before the meeting. So, I can tell you that we're not well-versed on the specifics and the facts, but to hear the passion and enthusiasm, I don't think, so I think there's two things at play. I don't think any of us on this board would in any way not support women finding empowerment in their particular sport or whatever you choose. So, I think we have two things going on here, but we don't have the full details, and so I'm just going to let Dr. Dettoro give all of us a little bit of more information on the specifics. And, but we thank you very much for coming forward and speaking, and we know that that can be difficult. So, kudos to all of you young women. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to thank Mr. Cunningham. We got a chance to talk earlier today, he was able to shine a light on exactly what the concerns and the questions were, and we had a good conversation this afternoon along the lines of logistics that have gotten to central offices level and obviously, nothing at the school board level. So, let me kind of start from the beginning. First of all, to the young ladies who came, I do want to, first of all, congratulate you because you're extremely successful in your sport. You absolutely do a wonderful job, and I appreciate you getting up and talking about the sport that means so much to you. What I share with Mr. Cunningham was a couple different things. So, allow me a moment to kind of take all the information that you just shared with us, and I'm going to try to work through it as much as possible. First and foremost, along the lines of taking things away, I want you to rest assured nothing is going to be taken away from you along the lines of your ability to compete within the Big North, within the Invitationals, and things like that. Mr. Cunningham got a chance to share with me about duel meets earlier today. That's not something that was ever brought to my attention, it's something that we can continue to look into. When I, what was shared with me earlier this summer was compensating coaches along the lines of going to these Invitationals. That's the first time even I've heard about these Invitationals because they're outside of the Big North Conference. I was educated to an extent on what the wrestling program looked like along the lines of the boys' side and the girls' side. I was educated that in the Big North Conference, there's no, there's no separation between a boys' division and a girls' division, that's what was shared with me. I understand that there might, there might be regulation coming down effective 2025 or 2026 along the lines of that's no longer. That's something that we need to keep an eye on and be aware of and understand what that looks like. So, we have the Big North Division experience, we have the Invitational experience, and we have the opportunity for duel meets, as you guys were just referring to. What was discussed over the summer with us, which we agreed to, was compensating the coaches for their commitment to making sure that you do have access to those Invitationals, which I want you to have access to those Invitationals. So, we talked about a compensation structure for that. It is absolutely not $70. It's something that is aligned to what's in, because we have to work within the contract that we have here for our teachers, okay? So, that's one piece. The second, the second piece that we talked about was I asked our athletic director to gather information along the lines of wrestler-to-coach ratio, let's take male and female out, wrestler-to-coach ratio around surrounding districts. I was really happy to see that our ratio is at the low end of what those ratios are. What I share with Mr. Cunningham, which I'll also share with the high school principal and the AD, is we have an opportunity to take a look and say, how are we breaking out our coaches? Now, to speak of our coaches, we do have three paid coaches and a volunteer. A number of sports that we have here do have volunteer coaches. I'm taking the volunteer coach out of our ratio equation, so he's not, that person's not included in breaking down wrestler-to-coach. So, if by chance there are opportunities, which I'm all in, if you bring them to us and we can discuss the logistics of it, if there are opportunities for you to showcase your talents, let's talk about it and let's see how we can make this happen. So, I don't want you to feel stifled, I don't want you to feel less than, because the information that was brought to us, we're trying to make sure that it happens. With the first time that I heard about the Invitational, we made sure that we took a look at our contract and pointed to a spot in our contract that we can compensate the coach, because, I'm so sorry, I forget your name, you were talking about bringing all the girls down at 5:30 in the morning.
Oh, it's amazing.
Ms. Novella?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Ms. Novella shared along the lines of it shouldn't be on a volunteer to have that responsibility. I understand and I agree with you. So, we have to look at what is needed to make those opportunities happen, okay? That conversation has to start at the school level with the principal and the athletic director. I'm not saying that to push you off. I'm saying that as the logistics start there, and then the proposals come down the pipe. What I can tell you is, along the lines of the specificity, something was said that I want to make sure that... I want to make sure that you understand the importance. Somebody said something about the cuts of uniforms. Okay? That's the first I'm hearing about that. And I want to make sure that my teams are equipped with the things that they need in order to perform. So that's something that we absolutely will look into. But again, this is the first time that I'm hearing about a lot of this, and I already engaged the high school principal and the athletic director to take a look at the resources that we currently have, and if we have to restructure those, we can totally do that because we're already in the budget year. That being said, we do have the resources. We have four coaches, three of which are paid, and if by chance we take a look and there are six, seven, eight kids who are females who want to practice in a certain section, that's something that we need to talk to that coach about. I can't change what the Big North has along the lines of expectations of competition or dynamics of competition. Hopefully, that 2025 decision will adjust all those different things, but we absolutely can look at what Invitationals are available, what schools have a group. I know that we were talking about Ramsey has a large number of female wrestlers along the lines of engaging in duel meets with them. Those are opportunities that we absolutely can look into. But I do want you to understand along the lines of funding and resources, my understanding and something I've talked to the principal about, and I can return back to the athletic director, all of our programs are funded to the extent that they need in order to execute whatever function they have. At no point was there a request that came to us along the lines of a resource that was needed that we denied. Along the lines of an extra coach, I'm going to go back to it. If there's an extra coach that's needed, we need to be responsible to make sure that our wrestler-to-coach ratio is something, if it's at a high level, then we have to entertain it. But if we look at, I know we have Mawa, Pascal Hills, Ramsey, Riverdale, Westwood, and Indian Hills. We're at the lowest along the lines of wrestler-to-coach ratio without our volunteer included in it. So what I can tell you is, I want to end with this. I appreciate your commitment to this wrestling team. I want to foster that. I want you to have access to opportunities like the Invitationals and the duel meets. I think the best next step is for us to talk to the building principal and athletic director so we can educate ourselves on what opportunities are there that we're not taking advantage of and what resources are needed in order to make sure that equipment-wise, you guys have the equipment that you need, because I think in all the things you said, that's a priority for me, too. And how do we structure the coaching staff that if it's better suited to practice as a cohort, then maybe that's something that we have to talk about along the lines of structuring the coaching staff as well. Again, that practice doesn't support what the competition is in Big Norths, so I say that very cautiously. Does that make sense? So where I'm at right now, just so you know, from my conversation with Mr. Cunningham earlier today, I spoke to Mr. Pascal, I spoke to Mr. Pelletier. They are aware of what the concern is. That's why we did our due diligence here, but we will have further conversations along the lines of how we can structure that system to support our female wrestlers, and they can be supported in growing in their expertise in wrestling.
Can I just, Dr. Dettoro?
You have to come to the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Please, thank you.
Sorry, sorry. Do I have to introduce myself again?
No, it's fine.
Just to touch on something that you said, this information was presented at the building level in March, and Coach Wagman was asked to put together a proposal, and that's what he did. And then he was also kind of just strung along, not here, but, and was asked to conduct polls, right? Gauge interest, right? Like I said, I have something prepared that is not suitable for like right this second, but you know, if you don't give, if you don't present an opportunity to somebody, they're not going to think they have it, right? Because I kept saying to Wagman, I'm like, "We got to go to Mawa one day." I'm like, "We have to have a booth. We're going to get the girls out there. They're going to do exhibition matches. We want to get more involvement. We want to see young girls feel empowered." If anybody here, like Derek said, watched the Olympics, four girls from the United States got medals. Two got gold, one who's 20 years old, just four years older than my daughter. She got silver, Kennedy Blaze, and then another one, Helen Morales, she got bronze. The first woman in U.S. history to get medaled in Olympic wrestling, okay? So am I, listen, I don't want, are they going to be Olympic wrestlers? Maybe, but you know what? I think they're doing a pretty good job representing Mawa when they go out there on the mat. You have girls who got all county honors sitting here. I mean, not to make Ava feel bad, I mean, her freshman year, she had a losing season. She won one match. This year, she blew it out of the water. I mean, you can't, that's because of the coaches. It's because of her. But the coaches, you know, like she's out there, she's putting in the work. They're putting in the work, but the coaches, the coaching staff this year, the four coaches, Wagman, Serge, Coach Jack, and Coach A.P., or as we call him, Coach Appleby, is, without them, this wouldn't have happened. Each one brings their own unique style of coaching to the table, right? Some wrestlers think that everything has to be done the same, right? Everybody needs to know how to dribble a basketball. Wrestling is very individualized. It's like an IEP, right? Everybody has their own style. They change the rules in wrestling. I said to Wagman, "What are we going to do about Ava?" I go, "She's, I'm like, you know, she doesn't like to take shots, and if anybody knows anything about wrestling, they'll understand the language I'm using. She doesn't like to take shots, and they change the points. I go, "I'm worried. She's a bottom wrestler. She's a defensive wrestler. She doesn't do good offensively, but she's able to get out, she's able to get her points, and she's able to get her pins, right?" Some of the coaches have one unique style that is for them, coaching. The four coaches together make this happen. And just to the point about the volunteer, it's like, I understand how the school system works because, again, like I said, I'm a teacher, so I know that there's a process. I know we have money, okay? Ava was taught a whole different style of wrestling this year. I also know in the contract, there's a specialty stipend for a coach.
Yeah.
But why can't we use that as a, that could have been a very good starting point for the program.
We did speak about that, and I appreciate you understanding that the specialist stipend.
Should I say?
The specialist, no, I, the specialist stipend is outside of what you're referring to, because the specialist stipend is for specific things that a team needs, that number one is an issue along the lines of like pole vault. We had an issue with pole vault. We have somebody who is a jumper, I guess it's a jumper, I don't know what they're called, that if you're not doing it correctly, you're going to get hurt.
Yeah, well, I don't know. I could never teach pole vault.
Number two, you can look at a couple other different sports. It's very specific. When you're talking about wrestling, and you put it perfectly, we have four coaches who have very high skill in wrestling. When you're talking about a shoot or a takedown, because that's what was proposed, all wrestlers at that level can coach that. Bringing in a specialist for something like that does not align to the contractual language of specialist. To speak to the contract, we do have, we do have something in the contract specific to going out with our athletes to specific events that we can compensate them for. That is under the parameters of what I'm referring to. The specialist piece does not align to what we're talking about with this specific support. Does that make sense?
No, absolutely. Absolutely. I just had to add that.
No, and just to close out, I want you to understand, and I don't want to speak for the board, I want this program to continue to grow. I love that we have the passion that we have, the skill that we have, the various abilities that we have, but also I love that we have our young ladies competing as well. So as I said before, I think it's important to go back to the school level, and I'm speaking for myself, to go back to the school level, take a look at what they have set up already. Are we able to identify opportunities for our girls to have some sort of coaching structure that focuses on our girls? But again, more importantly, we're talking about events like the Invitationals, like the duel meets, that they're able to showcase their talents against other girls. I think we're all saying the same thing. I just want you to understand, the fact of the matter is, is what we are competing against, no pun intended, is no matter what we do here, until the Big North changes their competition structure, we're still going to be going up against that specific piece. So what I can, what I'm committed to you about doing is I will go back to our high school principal and our athletic director, take a look at our coaches, I'm going to say three, I'm going to take out the volunteer, and I'm saying, with our nine-to-one ratio, understanding that we have a growing female population, how do we utilize those resources to carve out time that they can specifically work in that specific section? We can start there. And then at that time, as it evolves, if numbers continue to grow, that conversation definitely continues. But I think starting at the school level is extremely important. Understanding that you might have, a proposal might have been made, I think we have to take a look at opportunities now within that proposal.
So I issued that to Mr. Pelletier in June, and that's something that I'm very uncomfortable with. I always tell the staff at all the schools, "I don't want to talk to the school unless my kid did something wrong, or I'm coming in for IEP or Bible board meetings." But I spoke to him, and again, this is very uncomfortable for me to be up here, and I told him, you know, what my vision was, because we're going to be here a long time, because I still got my sixth grader coming up, he wrestles, and I'd like to keep him in the district. He's a talented wrestler along with Mr. Cunningham, so I would like to keep the talent here in the district. I think my main thing is, if I'm just looking at it from like an outsider, like a layman-type way, I don't, I don't want my daughter to lose any of her coaches. And I don't know a single person in this room, unless you're doing it at the rec level, who would work for nothing. So when you're, so we're, you're, we have three paid coaches.
Yes.
But we have a fourth coach that is on a volunteer basis. That fourth coach may have been the person that would have lifted these girls up. And I don't want to see him or any of the other coaches go because they might not, they might need to work, or they might need the money, you know? I don't want to take that away from them. That's really, that's really like why I am here. I'm pretty sure Mawa will do the right thing. I'm a little concerned that this has been, this has been moving a little bit since March, and some people haven't maybe been exposed to everything. I understand that not everybody understands wrestling, but I mean, I saw one of, this is going to sound terrible, and I apologize. I only saw Mr. Pelletier at the wrestling matches. I don't, if you could ask these girls, you can ask the parents, I'm at everything. And I have three kids. My husband works for the sheriff's department, he's never home, and I go to every single thing. So I don't, my thing is like, I don't know how you can say no, using that term very broadly to something that has never been witnessed. If you don't understand the sport, and if you, and I haven't seen you at a match, and I'm not talking about anybody here, you can't tell me no. Come talk to me. Come talk to Derek, Mr. Seigler, Alex Cussey's family. We have another boy, Aiden, his grandparents throw every match. Come talk to us. Ask us about it. Come watch us, not just the girls, watch the boys. I mean, girls are more exciting, no offense, but.
Well, Ms. Novello, I think we clearly understand the passion behind this, and we, I think, have understood that this is something that's very important to these young women. And I think, as I said, I think it's perhaps in the logistics of this, I think we're all on the same page of wanting to support in whatever way we can. I mean, I can speak for the board, I think, I mean, that we want to support in any way, but again, we don't have all the facts at this point. We don't have all the specifics. And again, Mr. Pelletier and Mr. Pascal, what the process is the correct thing that you did to go through that process. Perhaps Dr. Dettoro will get some more information, as he indicated, and I think my sense of this is there will be some further conversations. Dr. Dettoro, correct?
Can I make just a quick suggestion? I think that if you want to gain a better understanding of what the main idea is here, is you'd have to talk to somebody who actually understands wrestling. Wagman puts together a proposal and handed it to somebody who has no idea about wrestling. So he's, you know, that would be like asking me to teach somebody how to fish. I've never done it, I couldn't tell you. Or to thread a sewing machine, okay? You have to, you have to get all the information from somebody who's knowledgeable, not just somebody who can read a document and then reiterate what they saw. And that's the only thing that I would ask. And I said that to Wagman, I said, "I really wish that we all could have sat down as a collective whole and had a broader conversation about what this, what this sport means to everybody, not just the girls, and how something like maybe reduce, I'm not going to say reducing, but not compensating somebody. The girls might have tournaments on the same day as the boys. How do you determine which coach shows up? How do you determine? We just got done saying, Derek and I, we were running back and forth trying to make sure we saw our kids on the mat. There was a time this year where I think Avery and Ava were wrestling at the same time, and if I wasn't there or my husband wasn't there to help coach, that one of them would have been wrestling without a coach. Wrestling, coaching wrestling, you are engaged. The wrestlers are engaged, and the coach is watching what's happening and giving you a heads up, okay? This is not like basketball, carrying around the sidelines, rolling screaming. It's very individualized, and I just would like to see them compensated for the work that they're putting in. That's it. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything else you want to say? Sure. Mr. Cunningham, come forward.
I'll make this quick. I know we've heard a lot of different things and go back and forth, and honestly, one of the main things is like, for my girls, like my daughter's grown up on the mat, because to be honest with you, those of you who might, on the board who might have wrestled, any of you girls have wrestled, good for you. If not, you might have missed out. No problem. Wrestling is a generational sport. Fathers, and I say that only that because we haven't gotten to the stage where mothers who have grown up wrestling, that's kind of why we're here, fathers who have grown up wrestling pass it on to their sons and daughters, right? The problem that they're having now is that like, you have, let's say, six. By midseason, if you did this, you probably have like 14. The reality of this is that any of you who have daughters who are in high school are about to get what I'm going to say, and, or who are creeping up that level will also get what I'm about to say. My girls who grew up wrestling didn't really have an option, like we got a mat in our basement, like this is what we do, okay? So growing up wrestling boys was not a big deal. You take somebody brand new at the age, a brand new girl at the age of 15 and say, "Hey, you're going to go wrestle Scott over here." He's going to grab on you and pull on your head and whatever else, you got to be okay and just deal with that. That's why you're not getting more numbers. That's why more girls aren't coming out. Like that's the reality of it, because it's awkward. This is an awkward stage of time of development, and that's just where it is, right? But that shouldn't be their barrier to have access to a sport that they could be competitive in, just like softball, or golf, or basketball, or any of these other things where it's already been provided, where they're not have to compete against or necessarily be required to practice for the boy in practice because it's new. Yeah, sure, they can all practice in the same room, but they should have the option to where they don't have to have competition from their counterpart. They should have the option to have competition from their peers. And that's really what it boils down to. That's really all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think let's have a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo. We do not have a Mawa student representative report, so let's go to Dr. Dettoro, superintendent's report.
I have a couple things. Let me start off by just saying we're excited that the school year is about to start. There have been a number of teachers who have come in, who have gotten their classes ready or checking in with students. It is an absolutely wonderful vibe across the district. I want to thank Mr. Romero, Buildings and Grounds, and the custodial staff of getting our schools ready for the school year. I know that that's something that is a monumental task, not just preparing the schools, but there have been a number of projects. I'm not sure if Mr. Gallo is going to speak a little bit more to them, but there are a number of projects around the district that have already taken place. So a big thank you to everyone getting the schools prepared. Every single year, to focus your attention up here, every single year, our district creates district goals. Those goals are grounded in our strategic plan. And I'm very happy with the work that's been done since 2021. That's when we started to create these district goals, and I want to say it again, you can go to our That's when we started to create these district goals, and I want to say it again, you can go to our district website, and you can see how the goals have progressed year over year since 2021. Our three district goals that, that we have identified, one is specific to curriculum instruction. That work is something that we've been talking about throughout the past year and a half, along the lines of our focus of NJTSS, which is the data initiative specific to understanding where our students are and supporting them along the lines of what their strengths are, but more importantly, what foundational skills do they need to be successful. Number two is, I was speaking about our strategic plan, we are on our fifth, we're going on our fifth year of our strategic plan. Understanding the importance of closing out this strategic plan, even more importantly, I think a major goal that we have is to engage all of our stakeholders throughout our community and invite them into our strategic plan building meetings. And at that time, we'll be able to understand the, the needs, the values, and the interests of our community, and we'll utilize that to inform us in building our strategic plan for 2025 to 2030. Last but not least is our financing facilities. This is going to be a yearly focus of making sure that we're able to maintain and support the, the facilities that we have in place and make sure that they're at a high level. So I wanted to share them with you. This is something that in January and in May, we'll be circling back to this to provide an update on how we are tracking with our strategic plan, and more importantly, our district goals. So I wanted to show that to all of you. The next slide, I'm, I'm very happy to report out to the community. Talking about our strategic plan and also from the different audits we've received and speaking to various parent groups, there have been concerns about opportunities and questions about opportunities about how do we get our students comfortable entering into the different schools? Whether it's kindergarten coming into our district for the first time, whether it's JK when all three schools come together, whether it's the middle school, whether it's the high school. On the next couple of slides, I'm gonna be able to show, show you the different opportunities that are, that have been created for our students to get to know not only friends across the town, but also staff members. And most importantly, I want to thank the Mawa Schools Foundation for supporting us with these different events. So on September the seventh, there's gonna be a kindergarten play date for all of our incoming kindergarten students. We've, we've been able to attend a couple of these over the past two years, and it's great to see new students coming in. Oftentimes, the ones that are most hesitant, hesitant are the ones that don't have siblings in the district. It's the first time that they're coming in our school, and they're able to get connected with other students who are coming in to kindergarten. So thank you so much to the Mawa Schools Foundation for supporting that process. Again, that's September seventh, for anyone who has incoming kindergarteners. It's a, it's a must-attend. The next event, which is brand new this year, is JK opened their building yesterday to all incoming fourth graders. I know Mr. Copeland can, can share that when we spoke to the executive HSO committee, there were questions about how do we get the kids that are coming into JK to get comfortable, and the parents to feel connected to the school, being that they're only there for two years. So there's challenges there. So Building Administration and Mawa School Foundation connected there, and the students and their families were able to walk the halls, see what the building was all about. They created a scavenger hunt to be able to go around and see the different things throughout the building. And the Mawa Schools Foundation sponsored an ice cream truck, which you can't go wrong with an ice cream truck. And I, I have to say, it was nice to see how many people did show up during that time, and to see the kids leading their parents around. A lot of the kids who had siblings, the siblings would come and be quasi tour guide, so it was a really nice feel at JK. So it's one of hopefully multiple opportunities to get the students and the, and the parents into the building to feel connected to Joyce Kilmer's school. Our next slide is the open house that took place today around Po Ridge. Again, it's an opportunity because the schedule's released for the students to come and really walk their schedule, understanding that's a big building and understanding the different wings. It's a great way to not feel that pressure of, I have to get to class because it starts at next time. It was a very good turnout, and we just want to thank the staff that showed up to support the families and the students of navigating that, that building. And last but not least, today as well, Mawa High School had new student orientation. That took place all around the building. There were a number of supports that were in place there, whether it's the staff, the class advisors, the SGA, and a number, a number of student ambassadors that were able to walk around our new students throughout the building to get them acclimated with the space, so when they walk in day one, they don't have that concern of, where is my class? So Mr. Pascal was able to address the freshmen, as well as Mr. McKee and Mr. Jan Dol, Mr. Jan Dol is gonna be their assistant principal, that's gonna be looping with them. So it was great for them to see different faces in the school that can serve and support while they're going through their first couple months of school. The next two presentations are our obligations that we have to the state along the lines of sharing information with our, with our Board of Education. Ms. Rizzo is gonna take a couple moments to share our mandated self-assessment data that is broken out by each school.
You handed me microphone thirteen. Dr. Fair, thank you so much. Good evening, board. Tonight, I'm here to review our self-assessment anti-bullying that is mandated on an annual basis. And I'll go through with you first how we calculate our scores and some of the important highlights from it. So for those of you who've been on the board for a while now, you're familiar with the process in which the building-based school safety teams meet to evaluate the building's performance based upon the Department of Ed rubric that is supplied to us. The principals and the safety team gather their evidence, they determine their self-score, and then I obviously as coordinator review their results and either affirm or resubmit or request additional documentation to support their scoring. Process hasn't changed in the years that we've had it. The rubric addresses the areas that we refer to as core elements. And you'll see on the slides that each of the core elements may have five indicators, three indicators, two indicators, and is also specific to the type of district that you are. Meaning that Mawa is a no-discretion school district in which we do not permit building principals to make predetermined reviews of cases before submitting them for HIV investigations. So once an investigation is requested or is filed, we move immediately into the investigative phase and do not allow an opportunity for review and consideration. So our core elements address areas as programs, trainings, instructional training for staff and students, curriculum and instruction, and the obligations there, whether or not we have the personnel dedicated for this. What, have we followed all of the Department of Ed incident reporting requirements, the investigative procedures, and ultimately, have we reported our HIV to you, the board, in our executive sessions? So that is the rubric in which the building has to score themselves on. Obviously, a zero means that we don't meet the requirement, a, a single point meaning we partially met, two points meaning we meet all the requirements, and three points meaning we exceed the requirements. And as we know in Mawa, there is this impassioned desire from our superintendent and assistant superintendent to exceed our requirements. So the maximum score any building can achieve on the rubric is seventy-eight, and ultimately, the average of the district is derived from all of our buildings. A high school in their self-assessment rated themselves a seventy-seven out of seventy-eight. And below you can see the core elements in which we've achieved maximum score. I'm gonna just successively go through each of the buildings in a similar manner, which Ramapo Ridge Middle School self-scored seventy-seven out of seventy-eight, and achieved those maximum scores in those elements. Joyce Kilmer, a seventy-five out of seventy-eight, and the assistant principal assured me that next year they're striving for a different score. Betsy Ross has a score of seventy-six out of seventy-eight, and achieving maximum from those core elements. George Washington has a seventy-six out of seventy-eight, and Lenape Meadows a seventy-six out of seventy-eight. And let me be clear before we continue on, Dr. Fair, in that these scores are not reflective of whether or not HIV is occurring or the investigations have to take place. These are all in response to mandates that are attached to the district policy and the Department of Ed requirements. So it is not as if we're awarding ourselves a seventy-six because there's no bullying, and it is because we have met the criteria of the core elements. The district average for this year is seventy-six out of seventy-eight points, and this is the data that will be submitted to the Department of Ed. So let's take a little bit and look at it. Obviously, as I said, um, in my little jib to my gentlemen friends here, um, our core elements were either meeting or else you, or exceeding the requirement. Last year was a very busy year for investigations, and as members of the executive, you know that because we go over every case. So we investigated a total of one hundred and one cases in the district, thirty-one of which are confirmed cases. And, you know, let's just take a pause at that one hundred and one and recognize the time and process that goes into an investigation. Whether that's an anonymous investigation through our online portal, or it is, you know, a parent calling a guidance counselor or a student advising a teacher of a concern around bullying, an investigation is something that can take up to ten days by code, and involves a, a reach in regards to investigating with witnesses, taking statements, going back to targets or alleged targets, going back to alleged or accused. And so we're talking about hours of time involved in one hundred and one investigations. Rightfully so, for anyone who believes that they have been a target of HIV. But as the board, long ago, when this law and initiative first came out from the DOE, we had to recognize that there was going to be a volume of guidance counselor, administrative, and designated staff to address that. So in our investigations this year, we identify areas in unconfirmed cases that are important for the board to hear and certainly our parent population. And I, it is a matter that I'm not sure how to remedy, and certainly have pondered long and hard this year in particular. We're seeing an excessive amount of counterclaims. And what that means is that someone who believes that they've been a victim or a target of HIV reports it to, to the authorities within the building. And when a parent is then subsequently called and, and is advised that perhaps their child is an accused in an HIV investigation, what is happening is that that family is then immediately issuing a counterclaim. And I can share some numbers that for you. At the ridge alone, we had at the second half of the year, twenty-two of our investigations were devoted to counterclaims. And of them, certainly if they were founded, it, it needs to be addressed, but we are recognizing that from our community, they're trying to use it as a means of empowerment and to diminish the, the situation. And the back and forth of it all is just what is leaving us saying, how can we stop counterclaims if they're not really warranted? And with that is basically a misunderstanding of some portions of the HIV law in which, you know, typical peer conflict does not meet the law and will not result in an affirmed case, but certainly it can result in us needing to investigate. And that's where I led to the, the commentary about mislabeling of peer conflict. So this table, and I'm, I'm getting to the point where I do take the oldest year off, but I think I'm gonna have to maybe take one more year off, just so you can see it all. So what, in essence, you're seeing in the leftmost column is the total number of investigations done by a building, each building this year, and then the denominator being if in fact it was confirmed. So you can see Mawa High School had ten investigations, four of which were confirmed. Ramapo Ridge is where, where we're focusing some of our energies in conversations. We had, what you see there to be fifty-two with twenty-one confirmed. And obviously, the remainder exists there, with as low as two investigations with one confirmed, eleven investigations, I believe that says zero, I'm sorry, my glasses are not. So, you know, in those situations, Dr. Dettoro and I have had conversations about Ramapo Ridge. And as I said, some of our dilemma is the counterclaims. But there certainly is a pattern of certain areas of concerns in the areas of, first off, the majority of these cases were not random acts of aggression, verbal aggression or physical aggression in that sense. Often the cases in the middle school are two friends, and then something gets said off-color or in, or hurtfully, and it results in the need for an investigation. And often those are reported by parents to guidance counselors to say, hey, I saw something posted, or I heard something said about my child and were really upset about it. But there is concern at the middle school for comments around physical appearance. We have concerns also about comments around race and other characteristics that we are addressing. So how does the middle school address this? We certainly have grade level meetings, we have the advisory period, we have made a full-on press with guidance counselors being present in the cafeteria and/or recess. And we're certainly working towards a directive that we were given district-wide to readdress or redress our code of conduct for all of our students. So the number in the ridge, while it's high in terms of total number of investigations, and there is a pattern previous years with that denominator, it is also intrinsic of the grade level, but nonetheless, we are, through our safety team meetings and obviously my bi-annual meetings with the administration, reviewing what can be done to affect change in that middle thing. So as the commitment was that I made, I don't know, when, 2013 this law came out, that I would make sure that the district abided by all the laws relative to the HIV investigation. All of the cases referred to the district, whether anonymous or by someone, are investigated. And all cases are investigated within the timeline set forth in the law. I'm good, Dr. Fair? So annually, I set goals for us based on our data of the self-assessment. And obviously, the grade check mark means we met it. So we're using our safety team data as part of our tier intervention support system to address systemic-wide issues and student-specific issues. And certainly, we conducted this year an administrator and anti-bullying specialist training to make sure everyone was aware of and on top of the policy and requirements. So I've set goals for next year. And that is to continue to evaluate the use of the safety team data to identify patterns, provide opportunities for students to have learning around the patterns that we see, obviously identify behaviors, and provide positive alternative behaviors to improve school culture. And then lastly is to continue to use that safety team data as part of our tiered intervention of supports, particularly for our student support data team. Our student support data team is slightly different than the academic team. The academic team, obviously, you're all familiar, you've heard Dr. Bavino, I Ready, all of those great things that affect academic change for our students. The student support data team is designed to address students who are having issues in the academic area outside of academics or maybe in addition to academics. Social, emotional issues, peer relational issues, attendance issues. And so we're using that data from the safety team to ensure that we have interventions and supports there as well. So those are the goals as a result of the district, that assessment that I would like to have in place for next year. And those are the results that I'll be submitting to the Department of Ed prior to the due date, which is October fifteenth. Any questions from the board?
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the last bullet on the last slide about how the safety teams are using data? So is that data collected for every student, or only students who get caught up in investigations?
Okay, so for, I'm gonna speak in terms of the student support data team specifically to what the Okay, so for, I'm gonna speak in terms of the student support data team specifically to what the safety team does. Now, the safety team is required to meet twice a year with me. And then in addition, they're supposed to be more than that without me present. And what we do is we analyze each H I B case that has taken place in the window. So I do a meeting with every building in either late December or early January and then again prior to the close. And we review cases to date. We look for patterns in locations, type of concerns, whether they are confirmed cases or not, how are they getting reported, what is there an issue with, and how do we affect change on that? So that is specific, when I reference my bullet, I'm speaking specifically to H I B data, particular to that building.
So what about code of conduct violations? Would they bubble up into this database?
The only way that code of conduct enters is if it's part of the pattern. So if we see that, let's say for example, lunchtime detentions aren't affecting behavioral change and are not resulting in what is our obligation, which is to make bullying stop, then it may be part of that. But the student support data team relies on that data that you're speaking about too. So my H I B data is only one portion of what the student support data team looks at. In our student support data teams, we look at visits to school nurse. We look at hallway behavior. We look at bus behavior. We look at attendance. We look at the overall use of our guidance department and perhaps students who are frequently using our guidance department or not using our guidance department at all, to see if there is a systemic way for us to intervene if needed and make a systemic or student support change. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Wow.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Dr. Dettoro, do you want to add anything? I felt like you were teeing it up. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rozell. So while the next presentation is pulled up, let me just kind of, not kind of, let me introduce it. The next presentation is on our student safety data system. Just to give everyone on the dais an understanding of what this is for, the student safety data system collects types of information from schools through the district level, incidents of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, or bullying, weapons offenses, substance offenses, and any other incident leading to student removal from school and H I B trainings and programs. This information is collected to fulfill the state and federal reporting requirements as well as to our obligation to the District Board of Education, law enforcement, and the state. The public safety, the public school safety law states that all acts of violence, vandalism, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying must be reported to the Board of Education. So just so you're aware, this happens twice in a school year. One is from July to December and then another one is from January to June. So this is our second reported cycle for the year. The data up there shows the different categories in which we are obligated to report. It's broken out by different schools. I'll give you a moment to take a look. The top part is the reporting for the second reporting period. And the bottom graph is the incident total for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Next slide. The next slide talks about the proactive measures that the district takes specific to H I B training and programs. Ms. Rozell spoke about this briefly during her presentation. We are obligated to report out in the different reporting periods when these different trainings take place. Some of the questions that we've had in the past, so I wanted to provide, the answers to is what is a program and what is training? So we have a laundry list of programs that we have running throughout the district. Let me highlight just a couple. Week of Respect, Responsive Classroom, Spirit Days, Team Building Days, Character Education Lessons, Field Days, Health Awareness, and Random Acts of Kindness are just some of the programs that we do to really instill the importance of respect and valuing each other and making sure that everyone understands that obviously kindness and respect is a priority of all lines of navigating our school. Trainings is, these are specific to our staff members. We have school safety presentations that are provided to the staff by our SRO. We have opening day trainings for our paras and our teachers specific to H I B. We have school safety team meetings. And we also have threat assessment team meetings, to name just a few. This next slide is new. The state, we are obligated to share this from the state level. Any time a restraint or seclusion is needed specific to our students, it needs to be reported out. This is the, this is the data specific to reporting period one or reporting period two. Just to give you parameters along the lines, I'm sure somebody's gonna ask, well, what's restraint? The definition under the statute for New Jersey under restraint is physical restraint is defined as a restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to move all or a portion of their body to ensure the safety of that student or others. This is only done by trained or certified staff members. Any questions?
Can you give an example of the situation where a child may be restrained?
Yeah. There are a couple of different times that if a student is in distress and there is in danger of hurting themselves, whether it's by way of just physically hurting themselves or if they're in an event, if they're running or fleeing, there's different opportunities that they could hurt themselves and we don't want that to happen. So there's different trainings that take place that our staff members are able to secure that student to ensure that they cannot hurt themselves.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Rozell. Thank you, Dr. Dettoro, for your presentations. All right. Mr. Lamb, do you have a report for us this evening?
Okay.
We'll look forward to that next time, Rick. Dr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do. It should be brief. So the first piece is we just want to give another shout-out to the Mala Schools Foundation. Registration is now open for this fall's Thunderbird Run. That will take place Sunday, October twentieth. So if we could all place it on our calendars. If you're not looking to run or walk, it's great to just be present. So that bit.ly link is an opportunity for people to obviously register for the event. And it's also an opportunity to register for the event at a lower cost. The second piece, Mr. Pascal and the guidance department, they're super excited and understandably so at their redesign of our career pathways webpage as well as our extern and internship programs. So have them preloaded just to give everyone an idea of what they look like. Whether your child is at the high school or you are planning on having one of your students enter the high school anytime soon, this is a great opportunity to check out our programs. The website redesign lists obviously our current pathways, but also speaks to something that's new, which is the potential transcript endorsement for some of our students, which can add value to a student's high school diploma, signaling to colleges the completion of a comprehensive, in-depth, and applied course of study in a specialized area. And then also provides insight from students, participants in either the externship or the internship program through video captures as well as students who have gone through or currently working through a career pathway at the high school. So just check those out. And I'm sure that when Mr. Pascal has further updates and he is excited again, he will share that with us. And the last piece is our Center for Food Action. They have an upcoming snack pack event that will be taking place on Wednesday, September eleventh in honor of Hunger Awareness Month. It marks twelve years of service to our community. So this year's event will be chaired by NBC News anchor Jen Maxfield. The CFA snack pack event supports our community by improving the lives of children and their families facing food insecurity and fosters civic engagement through service. This year, the hope is to create two thousand snack packs to assist local children at risk of food insecurity. So tickets are now available for purchase online for the event. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, my report this evening. I think we have a slide for more goals. Thank you so much. Excellent. All right, so I just want to update everybody that as a board, we met in August. We have a board retreat that, you know, gives us an opportunity to discuss the upcoming school year. And these are some of the board goals that we have established. So the first one is related to the district goal number two, which has to do with our strategic plan. The strategic plan was something that was created from 2020 to 2025. And again, sort of a guiding principle for how decisions are made in this district. We're gonna be coming up on another strategic planning process, working together with the administration, staff, students, school families, and the entire Mala community is invited to participate in that process. So we're excited as a board and there will be dates coming up towards the end of this year and going into 2025. So look for those. Number two, one of the most important jobs that a board of education does is ensuring that our policies and regulations are up to date. So number two speaks to that. We will be reviewing, our policy committee will be reviewing this year's series one thousand and seven thousand. And we will do this on an ongoing basis. So that's another important goal for us this year. And then number three, we wanted to look at, we've hired a district communications consultant and we thought it was important that the administrative team is working very closely with them. But we thought as a board, it would also be helpful for us to have some conversations to refine our communications with the community as well and some suggestions they may have. So that's our third goal. So those are the goals for this year and we look forward to accomplishing them with the support from our administrative team. All right, and the only other thing is it's an exciting time. Everyone's getting ready to go back to school, right? Next Thursday. Tuesday, the teachers come back and we have, thanks to Dr. Fair and his team, as always, we have a wonderful group of teachers, paraprofessionals, a full staff. We have nurses, custodians, we have so many people that get this district up and running. They make it look easy, but it's not always easy. So again, good luck. Hope you have a wonderful school year and, you know, we look forward to seeing all the great and happy faces on that first day of school. Okay, board committee reports. What do we have this evening? Mr. Copeland?
We had a very brief, not brief, but very formal transportation committee meeting. Mainly, it was just to bring Mr. Lampy up to speed as to what the committee was doing. But Ms. Spindler gave me some data and I wanted to share some of this stuff with you guys. First of all, for this school year, Ms. Spindler and her team has been able to consolidate routes, bus routes. We were able to basically consolidate five routes into the existing routes. So what that means is that we have five less routes on the road. Those students are now gonna be basically absorbed in the curb routes. Ms. Spindler has told me that, you know, the routes may go a little bit longer, but not significantly longer. So it's just a little bit more efficient. She's found some efficiencies, lower ridership basically, and she was able to kind of rejig some of the routes. The waiver process is still going on. We had fifty-four complete waivers for this coming school year and expect to get a little bit more. The senior class was at the high school, I think on Tuesday, to get their parking permits. And so probably submitted some waivers there. I also wanted to remind everyone in the district to be patient. We all know the first couple of weeks, Ms. Spindler could basically dictate exactly what's gonna happen on each day. Buses will be late, buses will be early. But know that your children are being supervised, they're safe, they will make it home. It will be late. It will not go the way it's supposed to. It's just the nature of the beast. So for the first couple of weeks, please be patient. Understand that the bus drivers are still, you know, they're getting familiar with the routes. They're getting familiar with the children. For the younger kids, we do have paras on the bus to help them through that process, especially our youngest students in kindergarten grade, to help them know which, you know, stop to get off at, you know, things along those lines. So again, just be patient. Ms. Spindler has been absolutely amazing over the last couple of years. And I want to thank her for all her help and efforts. Thank you.
I think Dr. Dettoro wants to.
Mr. Copeland, I appreciate you sharing that along the lines of the pulse in the road that we have for.
On the content.
But what I do want to say, I appreciate you sharing about Ms. Spindler. Just so everyone's aware, Ms. Spindler has been able to get the routes finalized well before the school year started for two main reasons. Number one, to get them into the family's hands. But number two, Scholastic has had their routes in hand for the past two or three weeks and they've been practiced. They've been going through the routes. So the first time that they're driving them, it's not the first time with the kids, it's not the first time they're driving them. So those types of things Ms. Spindler has been working through with Scholastic to ensure it could be as fluid as possible. But you're absolutely right. In order for them to lock in the time, there could be variations of five or ten minutes specific to a route. And there could be ancillary routes that are impacted higher. But please know that if there is a concern, please reach out to the school or reach out to Ms. Spindler and they will attend to it immediately. So thank you for that report.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. And my daughter was one of the kindergarten students who fell asleep in the last seat of the bus. And now she's going to medical school. So it does all work out. But anyway, hopefully that doesn't happen to anyone here. But again, patience is important at the beginning of the year. Mr. Gallo, perhaps?
Reporting on behalf of Financial Facilities, we had our first committee meeting in a while yesterday. It was a very productive meeting. We essentially, Greg Romero, our supervisor of buildings and grounds, reviewed dozens of projects that were conducted, either repairs or maintenance or upgrades that were done throughout the district in virtually every school over the summer so that our schools are ready for the students to attend this year and to make some improvements that have been long in wait. One of the more strategic things we discussed though, I had reported this on previously, a few months ago, I guess in the spring, the district applied for some capital reimbursement money called ROD grants. We rewarded six projects valued in total at like eleven million dollars. ROD grants work in a way that if we have, let's say, a million dollar project, the state reimburses forty percent of the value of that project, but we have to front all of the money when the project is awarded. So, good news. Bad news story is, the good news is we got the money and it doesn't expire. Bad news is we don't have eleven million dollars to front to get all of our ROD grant money, ROD-approved projects awarded. That being the case, we decided, we, Dr. Dettoro asked Greg to sort of prioritize the projects that we could fund. So if the projects were identified that were in priority order, one is a replacement of four rooftop HVAC units at the new gym at JK. And the second project is related to roofs, various roof areas at the high school. Those projects are valued at close to one point five million dollars. Again, we have to front that upfront, but we're gonna owe close to six hundred thousand dollars on the way back. However, we had this lovely. So one of the things we have been cognizant of now for probably two years is that even though we're generating sort of on a consistent basis, capital reserve, maintenance reserve, funds as a result of good financial performance, our needs in the district continue to grow faster than our ability to fund them. And again, this just brings into focus the need for some alternative funding mechanism in the next one to two years to. in the next one to two years to address projects that maybe today aren't needed, but three, five, six, seven years down the road will be needed to be undertaken. So I'm just softening the ground for alternative funding in the future that we'll need to be pursuing. Because this, we looked at the $11 million projects and go, wow, that's only six projects. I could probably list another 20 worth tens of millions more that probably have to be done over the next five years. We will not have that ability to do from our internal funding resources. But as always, we're doing a two-path funding solution here. It's continued, Dr. Dettoro is laser focused on generating more capital reserve funds for our district while we are in the process of developing an alternative funding mechanism for our capital reserves. So this is something that's not going to fall off our radar. There were a few other items we discussed. The business office is going to be undertaking some initiatives to improve processes for cost savings and productivity measures in their office related to the digitization of records that are mandated to be retained by the district, and also some tools that'll help documents flow better through the office, such as digital signing of contracts and so forth. One issue that I did bring up that I would like the committee to consider over the next year or so is our policies and procedures regarding how the district manages what I call the scholarship fund or the endowment fund. In the last few years that I've been on the board, two benefactors of the district have donated over $2 million to the district for the benefit of student scholarships, in addition to dozens of other smaller scholarships that have been long established in the district. Because the number has gotten to a certain level, we have opportunities to leverage that money in a way that honors the bequests of the people who gave us the money, but more importantly, services our, helps our students later in their college or technical training careers. So that's something that will be on a committee goal for this year. So if anybody has any questions about that, please reach out to committee member or to the business office. And it was our first time with Tom, so it was a good experience. Where he seems to have fallen into the job, you know, like as though he was here all the time. So thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other reports? Mr. Denise?
Yeah, Policy Committee has two policies that are being abolished and six policies on tonight's agenda for the first reading. Policy 0164.6, remote public board meetings during a declared emergency is being abolished because the emergency administrative code that was adopted permitting remote board meetings during COVID-19 declared emergency has expired. Policy 7231 gifts from vendors is being abolished because it is included in other policies and regulations and is therefore redundant. Policy and regulations 3160 and 4160, physical examination, have been revised to state that the Board of Education will follow the current NJDOH guidance for TB testing in New Jersey schools. Regulation 5200, attendance, has been revised to include the provision of a state excuse absence for attendance at civic event, the definition of a civic event, and the required procedure for approval of such absence. Policy 5350, suicide, student suicide prevention is being revised to include several new requirements, including training requirements for staff members to be trained to warn and protect when they have information that a student intends to harm themselves, and a requirement to notify all staff who are required to be trained of the district's reporting and suicide prevention awareness and response protocols. Policy 8420, emergency and crisis situations, is being revised to include new language that requires current staff training for school security to be updated, to include procedures for accommodating students with disabilities during drills and emergency situations. Lastly, is policy regulation 8467, firearms and weapons, has been revised to provide additional details regarding student possession and/or use of firearms and weapons on school grounds, including revising the definition for the unlawful possession of weapons, reporting students or staff members to law enforcement authorities, and handling of alcohol or other drugs, firearms, and other items.
Thank you. John, Mr. Denise. All right, from instruction and curriculum, we had our meeting this week, our August meeting. Most importantly, this, most of the conversation was related to the updates to curriculum, which is on our agenda, asterisk item 18BB. Curriculum revisions were basically courses that were with math and our ELA courses. They had to be updated language-wise to the new NJSLA, ELA, and math 2023 standards. So there was no substantive changes. These were just a few things that needed to be updated. A few things, we did have a few, we had several supervisors who came and principals came to report to us. A few things I really want to highlight. Number one, Mr. Bowie came to us, the JK principal, and the update from JK is that we have a new, this is something that the board voted on previously, a new curriculum for science. This is a new program called Elevate Science from Savis Learning. And students are now going to get 120 minutes of science each week at JK. So it's a real rework of the curriculum. So I think that's very exciting because we really, as our data has shown us, that science is sometimes an area. So I think it's very important that we're starting this at the younger ages. Teachers are going to have their in-person training next week, and the program will begin with students by the second week of school, so they're going to be up and running. The other, two new courses, Courtney Corolla, our multilingual supervisor, pre-K through 12, came and presented to us about Mandarin Chinese 1. So this is grade eight, and that course was created for eighth grade students to continue the study of Mandarin Chinese 1 that they start at the ridge. By completing this course, they will be on par to take Mandarin Chinese 2 in their freshman year at Mawa High School. So I'm sorry, the course is Mandarin Chinese 1, and then that will relate to Mandarin Chinese 2 at the high school. So again, it's an opportunity for us to develop a pathway for a third language in the district by starting it at the ridge and then transitioning into the high school. And then Mr. Sheikh, our Faisal, am I saying it right, Sheikh?
Faisal Sheikh. Castle.
Castle, okay, Faisal Sheikh, I want to make sure I say it right, who's our new math supervisor, 6 through 12. And he, they, he and Ms. Corolla spoke about, they are, they've created a course called Pre-Algebra Solutions, grade 6 through 8. And this course was created for our 6th through 8th grade students who are multilingual students, who have diverse mathematical backgrounds and abilities, and their proficiency in English also varies as well. So this is a course to help prepare them for higher level mathematics. And this is a course that they will participate in, but there will be rubrics of how they can then also phase out of that course as needed and when needed to join the regular curriculum. So again, it's just to give additional support to our multilingual learners, and so another great, you know, option and thing we're doing at the ridge. So those were some of the highlights. The rest, there's a whole list of curriculum that we're approving tonight under 18BB. Okay, any other board member remarks this evening? Mr. Copland?
I'll keep this brief. I wanted to thank all the young ladies who came out tonight. Everyone who spoke showed their passion, and your parents should be very proud of what you said and how you did it tonight. So thank you all for coming out. I am disappointed that we're having this conversation at the end of August, and this didn't hit central office in the spring. I think this should have been done sooner than a week before school started. But with that being said, I do want to thank Dr. Dettoro for making this a priority, for, you know, working with the building administration to find the supports, find the resources to help our female wrestlers get to where they need to get. I have personally seen our wrestling program in town over the last 13 years grow, especially our female, our girl side. I've seen the resources that the youth programs have put towards recruiting, and that has something to do with Derek and his wife, and just focusing on developing these girls to get into the high school level. And there was a point made that the youth program is a feeder program, and we have all said that we want to keep as many kids in Mawa as possible. And this is an opportunity to kind of do that, to say, hey, we see that, we see that there's an interest here. We see that this is growing, and now it's our opportunity to say, hey, yes, we want to keep these girls here. We want to keep all the kids here, we want to keep all our athletes here. How do we build this program out of support? So thank you to you, and again, thank you to everyone who came out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Copland. Any other board member remarks? Ms. Ting Jansen?
I just want to say thank you to the young ladies. You set a great example by standing up and using your voice for what we want. And I just encourage you to keep having the conversations as outlined from the beginning, where we work with the principal, the athletic director, and continue down that path, so we can do that together. But I'm confident we'll find a solution, and I'm really hopeful and supportive of everything you guys are doing. So thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Ting Jansen. Anyone else? Okay, let's go on to Carmen. That's, let's take 17A and B. I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Hughes. Roll call, please, Mr. Lam.
Roll call.
I'm sorry. No, is it not? You need one?
Hold it. Yeah, just for a few seconds.
Roll call.
Yep.
Mr. Denisova? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski?
I'm staying on A and yes, I'll be.
Ms. Ting Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copland?
I'm staying on both.
Ms. Devin Arrow?
Yes.
Dr. Morton?
Yes, I'm good. All right, now let's take 18 on new business. We have A to FF this evening. Mr. Kismarski, seconded by Mr. Hughes. All right. 18A through FF, Mr. Lam, please, thank you.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski?
Yes.
Ms. Ting Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copland?
Yes.
Ms. Devin Arrow?
Yes.
Dr. Morton?
Yes. All right, at this time, let's take 19. This is new business personnel. We have here A through Z. All right, I need a motion. Mr. Copland, seconded by Mr. Denise. All right, Mr. Lam, please.
Roll call, Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski?
Yes.
Ms. Ting Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copland?
Yes.
Ms. Devin Arrow?
Yes.
Dr. Morton?
Yes. All right, public questions or comments. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness. You're asked to limit your questions to no more than one, and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Ms. Ting Jansen, seconded by Mr. Copland. We are officially open to the public.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Fezen, 20, Falcon Court, Mawa, New Jersey. I know there's been a lot of discussion in this room and a lot of discussion in the Borough Hall with the council members regarding law enforcement in the schools. And I was wondering if there was any agreement in terms of who pays for what, and what kind of law enforcement is in each school, and a timetable, et cetera, et cetera. So I would love to know what, what's, what has happened, or is it still being discussed? I don't know.
That'd be great. So as of right now, we have our SRO, who we renewed for the high school. That is a Mawa police officer who was stationed at the high school. The board was generous enough to award or approve a school security officer around Po Ridge, which I'm happy to report, who was on a previous agenda, who's Officer Hunt, who is a retired Mawa police officer who will be at Ram Po Ridge. We love that he has the connection with the community. He understands working with the students through our LEAD program over the past long, large number of years. And what we spoke about in previous meetings is we're working to establish that experience at Ram Po Ridge with the hopes of growing it, this security program through our elementaries in the coming year. Along the lines of the compensation, we have had conversations with the town. They're, at, the last that I know is they're, they're in conversations about it.
Our attorneys are working through a shared service.
Perfect, so there will be a shared service agreement between the town and the school.
So starting next week, there'll be two, there'll be two law enforcement in two schools.
Correct.
And then what about the other four?
That's what I was sharing. Along the lines of the expansion of that support, we are working with what that looks like at Ram Po Ridge along the lines of not only just the presence of a security officer, but how they engage not only with the students, but with the community as well, and working with, not from the security aspect of it, but also through the education aspect of opportunities to teach the students various topics that come along the pike throughout the year. Once that is a successful program, we're looking to institute it into the elementary schools in the coming year.
In the coming year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Fezen.
Sorry, I know you guys are sick of me. Gillian Novello, 19, Dogwood Court. I just want to thank the board for listening to us patiently, listening to us and fielding our questions and having a discussion with us regarding what we're trying to do here in Mawa. I know there are familiar faces, so if anybody has a deep interest in understanding, if you don't, are not familiar with wrestling, and the amount of research and energy that goes into it on a coaching level, and you're not comfortable talking to a coach, I know Derek and I, we're pretty schooled in how everything works because we have to watch our girls maintain their weight during the season. It's, it's highly regulated across the, across the league and across the nation. They do it in a very safe manner, and that, with that takes time, right? Takes energy. That's one wrestler, last year, the Mawa wrestling team, I think, had 26 participants, one of the largest the high school has seen in a long time. So, you know, we're, Derek and I are rooting this program on. We want to keep our kids here in town. We love Mawa, that's why we live here. But I'm open to having a discussion with somebody. If you want, if you need more information, and you want to get a deeper understanding about wrestling and what it takes, it's not just going and, you know, supervising kids at a match. There's a, it's very hectic, and, and it's very time consuming, and it's very, mentally, you know, it just, it takes a toll on you. You never leave a wrestling match without thinking you have to go to the Mawa boardroom. Okay, so again, I just want to thank you guys. I know we kind of maybe like bombarded some of you. I'm thankful that Derek was able to talk to Dr. Dettoro today and have a, you know, mature conversation about what we're trying to do here. And I just would really like for everybody to consider having the girls have a paid coach, because I can assist, Derek can assist, but, you know, we have other kids we have to worry about too. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I have a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Ms. Ting Jansen. We do not need an executive session, so a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hughes, and seconded by Mr. Copland. All right, good luck, girls, on your first day of.